I'd like to call to order Bristol, Virginia City Council for February the 28th, 2019. So at this time, let's take a moment of silence. Please stand for the place of allegiance.
Place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, it's all yours.
All right, good afternoon, council. This is the first budget workshop of fiscal year 1920. And tonight, we will be covering our revenues and, well, if I can get this. We're covering our revenues and our debt that we have upcoming associated with our refinancing that has increased our debt service approximately $2 million. Tonight, we'll go over the process and schedule. We'll go over council goals and city manager goals for this upcoming budget year. We'll talk, you have a whole list of every revenue item in the city in front of you. However, I want to highlight probably what we consider the most volatile ones and the ones that we consider that we need to stay on top of because those are the type of economic indicators to help us forecast for the future. And then, as I said before, the debt service. I want to remind everyone that the purpose of these budget workshops is for myself and staff to receive feedback during the budget development process and to communicate where we are at this point in time. The budget remains a working document throughout this process based on historical data, trends, and projections. I'll be more than happy to take questions as we move throughout the evening tonight, or we can hold them all towards the end. If I don't have an answer to your question tonight, I will get you an answer in the very near future. I should have answers, I would think, to most of your questions. And if council desires, we can have public comment at the end of this as well. And just remember, the budget is just one piece of the puzzle for, or the revenues are just one piece of the puzzle for the entire budget. I want to remind council, too, that the definition of a budget is defined in Virginia Code 15.2 hyphen 2503. And this is just a short snippet of that. It says, "The governing body shall prepare and approve a budget for informative and fiscal planning purposes only, containing a complete, itemized, and classified plan of all contemplated expenditures and all estimated revenues and borrowings for the locality for the ensuing fiscal year." Here's our workshop schedule, February 28th. Tonight is Revenue and Debt Plan. Next Thursday night, we will be discussing personnel, which will include salaries and benefits, department requests, and the capital plan. We've already kind of touched on the capital plan at the last meeting in January and gave you some of the update, or some of the highlights from that. March 12th will be the non-mandated outside agency request and the Bristol, Virginia Public Schools presentation. On Saturday, March 16th, it will be solely devoted to the solid waste disposal fund. That meeting will begin at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday morning. I anticipate us being through by 1:00 p.m. And we will also have the engineers from SCS here that day as well. March 26th will be the public hearing and the budget presentation by myself. On April the 9th, we will have the tax rate resolution. That's a little bit earlier than what we've done in the past, but based on where we are as a city, based on the fact that I'm not anticipating having a request for a tax increase, nor am I going to request a tax decrease based on our current financial situation. April 23rd, we'll have another public hearing, and it'll be the first reading of the appropriation ordinance. On April 27th, there'll be a workshop, I'm sorry, May 14th. April 27th, there's a discussion of council, if any changes that you all would like to see change in the budget. May 14th will be the first reading of the appropriation ordinance, and May 28th would be the second reading. And at that time, we would have a budget passed for the city of Bristol. So let's talk about council budget goals. Goals that I've received are maintain the reserve funds, maintain the unassigned fund balance, self-sustain the solid waste disposal fund, have a structurally balanced budget, adequate funding for the CVB or Discover Bristol, full staffing for police and fire departments, jail N X renovations, investments in employees, provide support to the school system. My goals for this upcoming year, we have to invest in our employees. We need to evaluate the compensation, the benefits, and the professional development opportunities for each of our employees. It's very important that we have an educated workforce. And one of the things that I've noticed we've cut over the past several years are training opportunities for our employees. And in order for us to provide the best service to our citizens, our employees need to be trained appropriately and be kept up to date on changes that are going throughout each one of their career paths. My second goal, a close second, I should say, besides investment in our employees, is self-supporting the solid waste disposal fund. That includes debt service and capital needs. It has to be done. If we can get that monkey off our back, our general fund will take care of itself. We have to have a financially sound budget, which means we meet our debt obligations. We have to plan for future increases, and we continually have to maintain that unassigned fund balance. And we have to be able to project what's going to happen with our revenues in the future and hopefully keep our expenses in check based on our projected revenues. And then finally, I think it's something we've all seen, we've heard, we've talked about it, is maintain our city facilities. Over the years, we probably have not put the funds necessary in place in order to take care of our facilities in a manner so that they last the longest amount of time that they possibly can before we have to do something different. So without any, anything further, we'll go directly into our revenues. This is our real estate and property taxes. You can see that we, our beginning fund balance is $437,324. This is from the savings of last year's refinance. And our real estate taxes, we are projecting a $428,000 increase in real estate taxes that is based on a calculation of what our assessed property value is. We had an increase in assessed property value this past year. And based on the fact, you divide the assessed value by 100 and multiply it by $1.17 and take 95% of that, because that's our current collection rate, you have a budget of the amount of $12,750,000. Our delinquent taxes are down, and it's solely because of the work that Ms. Britt does with our treasurer's department in collecting those taxes. While I'd like to see that number higher for purposes of the budget, it's always great to know that the taxes are being collected. And those, we are projecting about $300,000 for that line item this year. Current taxes on the real property and phase one of the falls, that's $284,000. That's a simple calculation based upon what the assessed values are. Current taxes in two and three, we've increased that to $155,000 due to new businesses going in in phases two and three. Our public service taxes, we have increased that by $30,000. That's based on historical data. And that's your public utilities, services, telephones, and things of that nature, transportation type businesses where we tax. Personal property on current taxes is, we've increased that by $27,000. That's based on historical data, to $2.98 million, an increase up from $2.953 last year. Current taxes on personal property in the DRI is $118,000. It's a $43,000 increase, and that's based on calculated figures that we have from the Commissioner of Revenues Office. Current taxes, personal property taxes in two and, phase two and three of the falls, we've increased by $2,500 based on actual calculations. And then, Ms. Britt, we can talk about the tax administration fee if you'd like to hit that real quick.
The delinquent tax administration fee? Last year's budget was $75,000. We're going to increase that to $90,000 this year. The cost associated with bringing a parcel to sale is quite expensive, with quite often there's appraisal done and always a title search?
Always a title search is done, so we're increasing that by $15,000. We do anticipate more parcels going to tax sale. The taxing authority consulting service has done a wonderful job for the city of Bristol, Virginia in cleaning up our 20-year-plus delinquencies since I've been treasurer since 2010.
Ask a question?
Sure. Just understand that that's a fee that's on the expense side, although it will generate more revenue because of the sales.
Correct.
Okay. But I mean, we're talking about revenues. I just want to make, clarify that, that that is on the expense side, although it will generate much more revenue than to offset the expense.
Mr. Harley, I think this is the fee that is charged for any delinquent taxes. That's the administration.
So that's, that's a fee we will get?
That's the administration.
So that's an income?
That's correct.
Okay.
But you're correct on the other one. The, this is the delinquent tax administration fee, and let me add just another piece to that. Every account that becomes delinquent does get that $30 fee.
Okay.
And, and we are pushing accounts through the collection process. They go to the tax sale, they go to every personal property and real estate. So that's a combination of the two. But in, in your statement, you are absolutely correct. There is a, an expense side to tax sale fees, and partial payments are received. I can't tell you that we receive 100% of every amount of dollar that's spent to bring it to tax sale. The goal of the tax sale is to get buyers on the roll books that will pay the taxes. Does that help?
Yeah, no, okay. So I understand, this is the fee you assess on that, but there's an offsetting expense?
Yes. But with, with TACS pushing the accounts through, that has helped drive that up as well.
Okay.
All right. Next is our local sales and use tax. We have increased the local sales and use tax by $335,000 for this upcoming budget cycle. That's based on an annualized calculation as what we have current to date through January of 2019. Consumer utility tax, same type of calculation. It's based on what we have received year-to-date, and that was a $5,000 increase. Our business license tax, we've increased by $110,000. That's based on historical averages of where it should be. If you will look, you can see in '15, '16, we were at 1.264 million. In '16, '17, it dropped down to a little over 1 million, then it was back up in '17, '18 to 1.258 million. And this past budget year, we budgeted 1.14 million. At this time, we've only collected $110,000, but the most of those business license taxes do not come in until May and June, and that's when we'll start to see that line item increase. Motor vehicle license tax, we did not change that. That's simply based on historical averages. And then, our bank stock taxes, we increased by $50,000 to $400,000 based on historical averages as well. Cigarette taxes, we discussed this this morning in the finance committee meeting. We have left that the same. I know the law has changed, which would prevent anyone from under the age of 21 purchasing cigarettes. I think there, there's an argument to be made that people between 18 and 21 would no longer buy cigarettes, but I think most people will probably find a friend that's over the age of 21 to take care of that problem for them.
Go to the other side.
So.
Go to the other side of town.
We're going to build a wall and prevent that. Headline tomorrow. All right, let's, let's check. I give you something every time.
You got to remember, people are fundamentally lazy. They're not going to take the time to go find something they go buy for them, they're going to walk across the street and go buy on Tensie's side.
We'll look at that, we'll, I'll, I'll look at that as this budget year goes, just to see if it's, if I think other communities are doing anything different, if they're going to lower that. It's something that we can change, but right now, we're going to leave it as it is. Lodging taxes, we've increased by $50,000, and that's based on historical averages of what we've seen and where we're at as a year-to-date for lodging taxes. So that's good. It's something we want to see. We want to see those lodging taxes increase. When you see those lodging taxes increase, it means more people are stopping in Bristol. If they're stopping in Bristol, it means they're eating at our restaurants in Bristol, which in turn gets you to the increased restaurant meals tax of about $40,000. We did that based on historical averages as well, and we're seeing an increase in the restaurant meals tax as well. Here's some other local taxes. Mainly, these are our DRI. Mainly, these are our DRI. We increased the local sales and use tax in phase one by $25,000. You'll have to remember that's an in and an out for us. Our restaurant meals tax, we left the same in phase one of the DRI. Business license tax in phase one, we increased by $20,000, and that was based on historical average numbers. And then, the local sales and use tax for phase two and three on an annualized amount, we increased that by $74,000. I know that looks huge, but you have to remember, we do have a couple of new businesses up there, and based on what we have collected so far, we feel like $110,000 is appropriate and probably a little bit on the low side as well. Restaurant meals taxes for phase two and three, we decreased by $20,000, and that's based on what we've collected year-to-date on an annualized basis. So it appears that there may be a drop in restaurants there. But you have to remember, too, we've had new restaurants come online in the city of Bristol. We've had McAllister's open and Popeyes and several other places. So those are, that could just be something we're seeing from that due to the fact people have more choices. And the business license tax, we've increased by $10,500, and that's based on an annualized amount as to what we've received. One thing that we did this year, we didn't do last year, I wanted to show what our biggest revenue growth items are. These are the top 10, I believe, and you can see what we have increased and how much we've increased those. So our beginning fund balance, of course, was started at zero, but that was increased by $437,000. Real estate taxes increased by $428,000. Local sales and use tax, $335,000. Business license tax by 110. Interest on bank deposits, and this is very important because this is something that we hadn't been, hadn't had the opportunity to do in the past. Right now, the city of Bristol has a significant sum of money in an investment account that's earning interest. Year-to-date, I think we've earned close to $84,000, mid 60s, I'm sorry, $64,000 in interest. And just a few short years ago, we were paying close to $92,000 a year in, in interest, paying that out to the bank when we were hitting our tan. So that's a huge swing for the city of Bristol, going from paying basically this $92,000 out in interest to now earning $92,000 a year in interest on our money. Current taxes on the real property in phase two and three, we increased by $89,000. I touched on that previously. We do have some new buildings in phases two and three. Same with the local sales and use tax. We have goods and, goods that are being sold there now that weren't there before. Work release fees, this has to do with our judicial alternative sentencing program, $63,000 increase. I would like to note that Allison Arnold is working extremely hard with that program, and year-to-date, $142,000 has been saved in combination with our drug court and the work release, or the judicial alternative sentencing program. I have reminded the criminal defense bar that they're still accepting applications for that. I've reminded Mr. Wolf, and I've also continually reminded Judge Johnson that if there's individuals that you think are suited for that program, please consider them for that program. We've had 17 participants so far in that program. I think there's 11 currently in the program. Some people have had relapses, that's what we expect, but it's a, it's a program that's working. And my initial hope when we started this program was that we'd be able to use those people here in the city of Bristol to do community service-type activities, clean up our parks, clean up streets, help us clean our buildings. The good thing is, these individuals actually do have jobs that are good-paying jobs, they're able to continue to work or get a new job, and it's helping keep them off the street and back in the jail. So I'm pleased with this program. I think we'll continue to see an uptick in the number of participants here in February or in March and April as some significant court dates come forward. Court fines, we've increased $60,000, and that's based on what we're seeing on an annualized basis right now. And then, our school insurance is, was increased by $56,000 as well. Our declining revenues, these are the items that had the most decline in our projections. Real estate delinquent taxes declined by $200,000, but that's not necessarily a bad thing. That just means they're paying them on time now. The sale of land and buildings, last year, we put in $301,000 for sale of land and buildings. We've decreased that by $101,000, and that's based on what we're seeing right now. There are a couple other opportunities for us to sell some land that we may meet that $300,000 year, $300,000 mark this year. It'll be close. Rental of our general property, we decreased by $40,000. Streets, we decreased by $28,362. Building permits and inspection fees, we decreased by $25,000. That's based on what we're seeing in regards to the size of buildings that are being brought to us and the number of permits that are being sought. We went over this before, the restaurant meals tax in phase two and three was decreased by $20,000, and the current taxes on DRI, which is based on an actual number, we decreased by almost $15,000. Our Sugar Hollow Waldo Miles fee, we decreased by $11,000. That's really based on a historical average, and if you look back for the pre, three previous years, those ranged anywhere from about low 30s to low 40s is what we were receiving in sugar hollow fees. So we're actually trying to knock, bump that back to where it actually is. Rental of our parking lots, it just means people aren't paying to park, we decreased by $8,000. Here is probably one of the most important things, if not the most important thing, that we will go over tonight. As we've had numerous conversations, and each one of us has a great deal of concern about how we're going to continue to pay our debt as we move forward from the city. On the very far-left-hand column, you will see what our original debt service was, which was per Davenport and Company, was at roughly $5.38 million up through fiscal year 25. Due to the refinance that we had to do because we had a balloon payment coming due, you can see that our new debt service has increased, will increase significantly. This coming year, we will have a debt service of $5.9 million, which is a shortfall of $581,000. However, what we have to remember is, we had a savings from the refinance, and that will have no impact on our budget this current fiscal year. Fiscal year 21, our debt service payment increases by $300,000 to $6.2 million, which means it was a shortfall, actual shortfall of $834,000. However, because we have some savings that were left over from that debt restructuring, we can use $794,000 of that, which means we have a $40,000 shortfall in fiscal year 21. That's doable, something that does not concern me. Fiscal year 22, we will have a $6.7 million debt payment, which is a shortfall of $1.3 million. However, we, where we budget a million dollars in the reserve, that will leave us a funding needed of $330,000, which is an incremental change because it will already be built into the budget of $291,000 for fiscal year 22. What this does not take into account is, we have, we know we have a lot of other businesses that are currently in the construction phase and in the phase of where they should be fully operational by 2022, and we hope when we see those businesses in place, that our revenues will overcome that $291,000 shortfall. Following year in fiscal year 23, we will have a $1.8 million shortfall, but with our $1 million that we currently set aside in our budget, it knocks it down to $834,000, which is a change of $504,000 from the previous year. The following year, our debt increases by about $500,000 additional dollars with the $1 million that we have in our budget, plus the fact that the payment to Washington County of $350,000 rolls offline, we will be short $150,000 for that year. And then, in the following year, once again, you have the million dollars set aside in reserve. We also have the $350,000 from Washington County that we do not have to pay anymore. We'll actually add a surplus of roughly $2,300. So I will tell you, the numbers on the far left is what we started with. The numbers on the far right are what we have to have in order to make our budget balance in the future. And I will tell you that each one of those numbers is very doable with, as long as we stay on track with what we're doing, we stay on top of our expenses, we make sure we stay on top of revenues, and if we see any sort of hiccup in our revenues, we need to adjust accordingly. But these are, these numbers are achievable. While the number, 7.7 million, looks scary, we have a plan in place in order to deal with this upcoming debt in our, in our future. So I think with your all's leadership and what we've done in the past, this is very doable and something that is not terribly concerning, but it does concern me, but it's something that can be done. It's not insurmountable by any stretch of the imagination. Any questions about the debt? Now, we're going to break this down to our general fund, basically the same chart, except we've broken it apart from the general fund, and the next slide will be your solid waste disposal fund. And I'll just immediately go over to what our debt will be for the general service fund actual. You'll see it's 2.7 million this year, jumps to 3.4 next, 3.7, and then 4.3, 4.3 again, five and a half, and then back down to $5 million. And on the right-hand side, you can see the change that we will have to come up with just for general fund debt. And then, in 25, year 25, we have a surplus of $485,000. But we have to remember, when we have a surplus like that, we have to continually save that because in years 26, 27, and 28, that has to be applied in order for us to reach the next payments of our debt. Solid waste disposal fund, this is why it's so important, the solid waste has to support itself. If these numbers here were zero, it makes all the difference in the world for our general fund. You can see that solid waste in 2023, $460,000 is a change that we have to have in order to deal with the solid waste fund. You see an increase of $607,000 in '24, but you will have to use that $607,000 to help offset what is needed in '25 in order to make our debt payment. Once again, if the solid waste disposal fund was self-supporting, it makes it, it changes the entire look of the general fund. Any questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, there's a little button on the front. You turn it on there.
In 18, I didn't want to steal his thunder. In this current fiscal year, since we've met our unassigned fund balance goal, we have a current $1 million budgeted in our debt reserve, that's the name of the account. If our revenues hold and we're to the end of February, and it looks like they're going to, those funds, those, that $1 million right after year-end can be assigned, can become assigned fund balance that will be available to offset these increases in future years. And we calculated, that takes us through citywide, that takes us into year 22, 23, for the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right.
No, into 23, 24.
23, 24.
23, 24. So those funds, if our revenues hold, it looks like they'll be available. So certainly, the plan that we have in place, as Mr. Eads mentioned, is, is at least workable.
All right. Gentlemen, that concludes tonight's budget presentation by me. If, as once I said, if you have any questions I don't know the answer to, we'll get you those answers shortly. We can go back and review any of this information that we've gone over, and the next workshop scheduled for next Thursday night at 6:00 p.m.
As we go forward with these things, it's good to just keep these slides and maybe just update them, so, because we're used to looking at it and just kind of add to it. So go back to that one, the, the debt service that showed the, yeah, yeah, yeah. So her million dollars that she was mentioning, right, if you put another column or note of, of how we're planning to maybe apply that to this slide, and then... to maybe apply that to this slide, and then, you know, maybe on the very end or something, to say what the numbers would look like if we apply that that way. So what you're saying is that $1 million is taking care of what the minus 330 into minus 834?
Right. The $1 million is taking care of the shortfall of the 1.3 million, which then...
Yeah, taking care of '22, '23, and mainly '24, yeah.
(inaudible).
Yeah. Is that $1 million you're talking about, is that interest-bearing at this point or no?
Well, we haven't finished the year yet, so that will be available after this fiscal year.
So it could be interest-bearing, so over $1 million, interest-bearing over that three-year time period still gotta be taken into account, so you're...
Absolutely. Yes, once it's assigned, it will be moved into the investment account.
Based on current interest rates, you'd probably look at over a three-year period, a total of about $60,000 in interest on $1 million.
Okay. All right, y'all got any questions, or any... I had a couple of questions. Back on the goals, so go back to the goals. One thing I wanted to bring up for discussion was, we've been talking about the, you know, we're starting to get serious about economic development, so you just hired economic development director, right? So one of the goals this year has to be, you know, top-line generation, which is economic development. So I would say, you know, one of our goals has gotta be, what do we need to do to not only, you know, put the staff person in place, but give the necessary financial tools, right, so that that economic development process has full steam ahead, so it's got a real momentum for us. So we're getting a lot done in this year to set us up for, you know, '21, '22, and beyond.
And that's something that we're gonna start discussing next week with, I'm gonna talk to the EDP, ask what tools are essential for someone in that role that's needed, and then once Mr. Wilcox comes on board, I'll be introducing him to the EDP. I'll try to set him up with some other economic development directors across the state, maybe not necessarily nearby because people like to keep things close to their chest because they think we're competing with them. But at least get him in front of other economic development directors so he can see the tools that they use and what we may need to use, and we can start putting some of those things in the budget that we know we'll have to purchase in order to make.
One of our goals is to really focus on economic development and top-line revenue growth. You know, that's one of our goals because we can only cut costs so much, right?
Right.
So I don't see that anywhere, so I would suggest that we put it up there because we are focused on that, right? So we can make sure we don't miss anything in the budgeting process to say, are we adequately setting ourselves up for good economic development? And then the other thing was, we keep talking about the reserve funds, you know, the unassigned fund balance, and then setting up maybe some other reserve funds that are there for your capital plan and some other things. So one of the goals would be to make sure we've got those funds set up so that we're setting the city up for future years to have the funds set aside to buy the capital and to service the debt, you know, that we're talking about. And so that's one of the goals. Now, how we do that, we'll have to figure that out, but at least that's a pretty important goal for us. That's the only two things that I think are at least big that didn't pop off the page at me.
Okay.
We didn't talk about a lot of the good things so far. I think, you know, we had a finance committee meeting this morning, and I know Bill was there, but there's a lot of good stories here. We're not kinda seeing it on these slides, but you know, not having the tan and the amount of money that we got now built up in the reserve funds, I think it's approaching what, 14.9 million, and we got 10 of that over getting the interest for us. So we have the generation of cash now in the city, so we're now able to kinda think about, you know, how we're gonna manage the debt properly and how we're gonna do the capital planning. The treasurer's office, getting the delinquent taxes down, a plan to go forward and do better job. So a lot of good things are happening properly, right, to control the costs and let the revenues start to grow for us so we can make sure this debt service you're showing's taken care of. So, you know, it really is not as scary of a picture as it was three years ago.
Four years ago.
Three years ago. It's not even close. So it's, there's still some rocky roads ahead, obviously, right? We've gotta develop the falls, and so we need to talk about that in the budget process, how we may be in the economic development side. How can we even do some other out-of-the-box thinking to try to incentivize the things we're looking for on the top line, you know, make it more attractive for what we're looking for to land in this city so that top line gets to where we want it to get to. So we gotta be really creative, I think, with that. I wanna applaud everybody on the jail annex or the work release and all the stuff going on in the jail. I think that's a good news story item. I think we probably wanted to be a little bit further ahead at this point than we are, but it's moving in the right direction, right?
It's moving in the right direction.
And so we don't wanna slow that down, so I think we've talked about in this budget cycle, you know, what do we gotta do to make sure the sheriff's department, the condition of the jail, and all the things associated with that infrastructure is dealt with.
We've got an RFP out right now.
So that's that annex renovation.
That's the annex renovation.
So that's a good story item, right?
Because we have to have that number. I mean, we could all sit here and guess all day long as to what it's gonna cost to get that jail in compliance with DOC, but until we actually have an expert that does it and look at it and say, this is what it's gonna cost, it does mean no good to put any sort of number into the sheriff's line item for renovation until I know what that's gonna cost. And that RFP, I think, is due back mid-March if I'm not mistaken.
And the capital plan, just to put a little bit more meat around that bone. I mean, you know, we know that the police department and the equipment, the computers, the vehicles, you know, we've let that stuff go for too long, so that's gotta be one of the priorities that we talk about, is, you know, trying to get at least a step or two ahead of the curve, not just keep up with the curve, so to speak, right? So if, and I'll throw out this as an example, if keeping up with the curve is to buy two new vehicles, but really getting ahead of the curve is to get three vehicles, we don't wanna cut ourselves short now that we're starting to get a little bit of financial belt under us, you know, make sure that we're taking care of the public safety side, right?
We have a plan in place that will allow us to replace six police vehicles every year with their current leases that are rolling off. We can use that money to actually go out and purchase vehicles with cash. And then, maybe it's purchase five, and then one would be coming from the asset forfeiture funds, I believe.
I think we're gonna, next year in 1920, in the capital plan, we're gonna set aside, have available $226,000. We're hoping that that will buy six. It may not, it may buy only five, but we're gonna build that up over time to, in fiscal year '23, '24, we have the local funds for vehicles to $480,000. The goal is that we're buying 12 a year, and that was based on the numbers in our fleet and the, not the useful life, but the max useful life of replacement. That was 120 vehicles, max life of 10 years. The goal was to get to 12 vehicles a year. And at the next budget workshop, we can show those details again.
I guess the other comment I'd make, you showed the cigarette tax thing equals. I've been of the opinion that we wanna make sure we look at that as some kind of a gradual increase over time for a couple of reasons. One, when we looked at the original municipalities around us, we were on the low end. There's a lot of them that charge almost twice what we're charging. And so we wanna take a fresh look at that. I think we all debated whether, when we increased the cigarette tax, whether the revenues would go down, but it's actually went up. It's climbed over the last couple of years, so it's higher than it was. So and just, you know, just morally, the health issues related to, you know, to cigarettes. I mean, you know, it's just not a good thing to, you know, to smoke. So we, you know, we would need to, like, discourage cigarette buying, honestly, from my opinion, right? You don't want people smoking because they're gonna end up with serious health issues. But if you go look at Lynchburg, I mean, I look at Tennessee, look at some other municipalities and see where we are with cigarette taxes. It's not a lot of money, but it's just everything we have, whether it's collection fees or cigarette taxes, just, you know, kinda where are we relative to the region here, and are we needing to maybe take another small step forward, right? Because we don't wanna get in the same practice we've had in the past where we do, we do no increase, we do no increase, we do no increase, we do no increase, and before you know it, you know, eight or 10 years has gone by, and then we're completely out of whack, you know, about 25%, and then we try to make one big jump, and it's a bigger problem trying to make one big jump than making, you know, some small steps along the way. So, and that would apply to any of this revenue stuff, really. Good job on the, I think, good job on the new restaurants, and I think that's why we're seeing some of the tax increases, but we still got the dilemma we talked about in the finance committee all the time, where the lodging taxes have to dwell from November to February. So we gotta collectively figure out, you know, how to, what we gotta do to raise that up. So, you know, I mean, I think we need to talk to the business owners directly and see what ideas they got and start to really focus on that, because that's one of the big improvement nuggets out there that could really help us revenue-wise, if we can figure out, you know, some clever ways of doing that, right? Other than that, if we can get Kevin to mow the yard around here in the grass a little bit so we don't have to, we save a little money. That would help too, but I don't know if we could do that.
I'll be right on it as soon as I get called up.
All right. If there's not any other questions or comments.
Uh, no. I thought that was a good first step.
All right. I appreciate it.
All right, we're turned.